I'd like to call to order the meeting of the East Lansing City Council Discussion Only Meeting of Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. Could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Altman.
Here.
Councilmember Meadows.
Here.
Councilmember Watson. Mayor Protam Singh.
Here.
Mayor Brookover.
Here. Mr. Meadows, do you have a motion for us?
Do I have a motion to excuse this evening Councilmember Watson?
I second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Watson is excused. Could we have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second, our move by Meadow, second from Altman. And any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion to approve the agenda passes unanimously. Now's the time for communications from the audience. Do we, I have one sheet here. Chuck Overby, now's the time.
Good evening, Mayor Brookover, City Council members. I'm Chuck Overby. I live at 433 Butterfield Drive in East Lansing. I'm a member of the Planning Commission. I'm also a member of the Bailey Community Association. I'll make it clear that I'm here tonight speaking as a resident of the city of East Lansing, my other capacities notwithstanding. And I'm here to ask for your help with what I see as a significant problem in the city, and that is noise in the neighborhoods and in the city. And I want to give you a couple of examples from my personal experience to help you understand how we in the neighborhoods perceive this problem. It's 10 o'clock at night. My house is closed up. The heat is on. I'm in bed reading. I live four blocks from campus and I can hear the noise of cars and motorcycles, and they zoom to catch up with each other. And it's disturbing to my sleep and to my health. And it's a discussion in the neighborhood of the problem of noise in the city. The other example I'd like to give you is I'm going west on Grand River in front of the Target store. I'm in the middle lane. On each side of me is a low, slung, gray, European sports car. And the two of them are playing tag with my car in the middle. And they are zooming and buzzing around me like bees. I don't feel, I didn't feel threatened. I just kept in the middle lane. And they had tinted windows that were so dark, I couldn't tell if there was anyone in the car. And they had something that was new to me was they had tinted license plates. And you couldn't read their license plates. And their cars were noisy and dangerous. So I give you these as examples of what we in the city have to put up with, with the noise in the streets. And I'm asking for your help with this tonight. And what I believe we need to do, and what you need to do, is to give the police the tools that they need to address these problems when they come up. And if, obviously, in my view, they don't have the tools that they need, or we wouldn't be experiencing these problems right now. So I ask you to give them tools in policy, in resources, so that we can address this problem in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody in the queue?
No callers in the queue.
Okay, we'll move ahead to communication from council members. Mayor Protam Singh.
I know the holidays are quickly approaching, but I just wanted to highlight that we do have some additional commissions that will be meeting next week. So check out the City Council website. The Arts Commission, the Tri-County Planning Board are two off the top of my head. And I know that there may be others next week. So don't lose sight of those options. Come out and talk with your neighbors. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Meadows?
Just to wish everybody in the audience, and anybody who's watching from home, you know, have a happy holiday. Stay safe. This is our last meeting for this year. And I hope to see you all next year.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Altman?
Thank you, Mayor. No report tonight?
Okay, I have nothing. Mr. City Manager?
Two items. First, I'm gonna read a statement as, "By the authority granted pursuant to Section 28-3 of the Code of the City of East Lansing, the City Manager hereby establishes the following different closing hours for city parks. Beginning January 2nd, 2025, and through March 31st, 2025, city parks shall be subject to closure when posted between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. for the purpose of wildlife management. When closed during the above dates and hours, city park entrances, including parking lots and pedestrian paths, shall be posted and barricaded to notify the public of the closure. It shall be unlawful for any person except those persons authorized by the City Manager for wildlife management to enter, cross through, or remain within the city park during any such closures." Second item is, this Friday, we're closing City Hall and other city facilities, with the exception of Hannah Community Center and the Public Library at 1:00 p.m. for the holiday reception and employee recognition ceremony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We move on to the agenda discussion items. Item 6.1, Ms. Watson, Bolter. I understand you're under a time deadline tonight because the legislature, the legislature is meeting back in session at 7:30.
The House of Representatives is going back in.
Where I assume you'll be representing our interests ably.
That's right. I'm more useful to you there, I think. But I do appreciate the opportunity to visit with you. I've prepared a few items, and then if you have additional questions, please let me know. First, I'd like to update you, and I think you've already heard, you know, because the news came out of the state budget back in June, but we were successful in seeking specific appropriations from the state budget. The city did receive $1 million for the Clerk for Administration of the election, and so that was an important investment that we saw the state make. Obviously, there have been additional changes through recent ballot proposals that had been approved in recent election cycles that have, you know, significantly changed some of the election administration requirements. And that was an investment by the state to, you know, recognize the work that that is and the unique challenges that having a college town can present in same-day registration and some of that workload. So that was a really exciting win to be able to pursue this year. And then there was also an investment by the state in recognizing the request for $2.4 million through the Leo budget to the city for the Trowbridge Road project. And so that was a really important investment as well. And it was on behalf of, you know, we had a united delegation. Our House and Senate members worked really hard to make sure that the city's priorities were heard, and that there was some funding included to recognize, you know, some of those items. And so on behalf of our, you know, legislative delegation, I think they did a really tremendous job of representing the city and the residents, and being able to secure those dollars for our priorities. So that's.
You've given us a report. I guess my question for you is, given the iterations in the report, is there any legislation that you anticipate, I understand this is kind of a guessing game, but is there any legislation that you anticipate getting passed during this time period before the holidays that will decidedly impact the city?
I think there could be really a number of items. And my crystal ball cannot, you know, say what will happen exactly in the next five days, or what I'll return to in the next five hours in the House. But there are some priorities that we are still pursuing. You know, we have been working to support Senator Bayer's Bill 660, which is the Stormwater Utility Authority. And that was moved out of committee recently, and I think still has a path forward in the Senate, until, you know, likely sometime late Thursday night. First House bills can still be considered by the Second Chamber. And so that has been, you know, one item that has been raised, and I think is still sort of in play. You know, usually you don't move a bill out of committee that close to the end of session if you're not intending to at least have it part of the negotiation and debate process. So there is still a path forward. If that one doesn't get finished across, you know, this year, I also think that this has been an important process of helping to educate legislators around that bill, and sort of how it may work to support the ability of communities that do need the ability to make some of those large infrastructure investments and changes. So I think that that education process has been valuable. I hope that there's a path forward to getting it finished this year. But either way, I think it will roll into the work that could be done into the next session as well.
Anything else on that category?
I would say, though, I was asked about the water affordability bills the last time I was before council. Those also still appear to have a path forward. They are both, there's a House and Senate package. Both have received a lot of attention and, you know, negotiation. They have very motivated sponsors, I think, as well, which makes a difference in these final days. And so I think that there is still a path forward for those as well. There are some changes that are pending to that legislation, you know, as the negotiations take place. It's not clear what a final version would look like, and so it's not really clear what the final vote count will be on that either. But since that was brought out before, you know, I would say that that's also a path on that. And then similar, but not the same, you know, water affordability assistance has been an issue. And then related to that, and sort of it was modeled after Michigan's Energy Assistance Program as well. And the energy assistance bills had moved forward, you know, sort of partway before the election, and then had stalled out. But just today have seen some additional action. So I think there's possibility for both energy assistance and for water assistance to move forward still here in these final days.
Can I ask two follow-ups?
Yes, of course.
Is Eagle supporting that, the water affordability?
I believe so. I've got a list. They have 65 different supporters that they put on there. DHHS certainly is. I don't know if they have Eagle written down as the lead.
So the admin then is supporting?
I believe so. I don't think that they would be able to commit DHHS and not Eagle.
Yeah. And back to the stormwater utility, has, does the executive have a position on that?
I think they're still working it through, which is why it hasn't seen a Senate vote on the floor.
That's, you know what math I'm doing.
Yes.
It's part of the viability in the last five days.
It sure is. Everybody wants to focus on what has the strongest path forward, so that you don't waste any valuable time or energy. Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Mr. Meadows?
One, I just want to thank you for all your work, you know, on behalf of the city over the years, even though you are very young. The, I wanted to ask if you have any, and you don't have to, if you can't answer these tonight, I would like some response anyway. JCAR has the International Energy Conservation Code pending before it. I don't think they've taken action on it yet. But that could improve energy efficiency within our community if it was adopted. I think we're overdue on it. I think it's the adoption of the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code. So if you can give me some information on that, I'd like to know that. I'm glad you mentioned water affordability, and that it seems to be moving. That will impact us in terms of our billing cycle, potentially. We can't bill for more than 3% of the household income if that, if those bills pass. But I think, like, I know I'm supportive of them. So I hope that the city looks at those favorably. There's a plastic bag regulation repeal that is pending out there. I'm wondering if that has a chance. This is an old issue in East Lansing, and we've been prevented from dealing with it. So if that is going forward, I'd like to know about it. And then there's a community, a set of community solar bills that would make it, provide an expedited path for us to include more community solar within the community. I'd like to know more about those, too. So again, thanks for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Dr. Altman?
We had talked before the meeting a little bit about loud exhaust, changes to the loud exhaust legislation, or changes that would make it easier for localities to enforce loud exhaust and modified mufflers. And there was a bill earlier in the year that seems to have stalled. And I was wondering if you could just sort of briefly address how you see us moving forward on that issue along the lines that we were maybe talking about earlier before the meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. So on the loud exhaust issue, since that is not an issue that is specific, you know, just to East Lansing, you know, these must be issues, you know, as those vehicles sort of drive through many communities and across the state. You know, I think it would be wise of us to engage the Michigan Municipal League and talk with them about some of the sort of research, resources, and brainstorming that they have done. I suspect that the same challenges that our residents are raising about this will be things that other communities are also facing. And should that be, you know, truly that we has to go all the way to, it requires a legislative, you know, change to statute in terms of how those complaints are processed or measured, you know, things like that, then I think we may find other partners that would also be willing to join us in seeking something like that. But it might also give us additional options for relief that wouldn't require sort of waiting that long as well. And so I think that, you know, we may talk with some of the other communities that struggle with that type of an issue. And they may join us in an effort, and they may also have additional suggestions for us of ways to pursue that. And I think the Michigan Municipal League really does a very good job of pulling together those resources and helping facilitate conversations.
Thank you. Anything else, Dr. Altman? Okay, thanks for coming tonight, and have a safe trip down to the Capitol tonight. Item 6.2, Discussion of the Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Other Related Reports for the Year Ended June 30th, 2024. Are you gonna sort of be the emcee, or?
I'll just make a few remarks. Audrey Kincaid, Deputy Finance Director. So tonight we are discussing our Fiscal Year 24 Financial Report. We have auditors from Raymond Robson to discuss, and they have a presentation. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the amount of work and time and effort that goes into preparing for the audit, working with the auditors, and preparing and reviewing that document that you have in front of you. I specifically want to acknowledge Andrea Smith and Justin Geiger for their tremendous participation in this process, but also finance who support us throughout audit work or just operations while we're working on this document and this process. And then any of the departments that get picked on during the audit, they share in our pain. So I just wanted to say thank you again, and thank you to our auditors.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
Hello. My name's Jason Salzwittel, Senior Manager with Raymond. As Audrey had said, we had conducted the audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. Joined here with Rick Lowe, a senior with Raymond, who's worked with the city's audit for the past three years as well. We have a short presentation to run through. It should be up here, yes. So the first part, I guess, before I get into the presentation, there was four documents that were handed out to all members of council. There's a very large one. That's the city's annual financial report. There's a very large one, that's the city's annual financial report. All that information there is compiled from the city's accounting records. There's about four pages in there that are, is our audit report, but the rest of that information really comes from all the city's financial information. We assist the city with preparing it, but it's all the city's information in there. The other bound document that has the cover page on it is the city's report for compliance with federal expenditures. And then there's two staple documents. One's a copy of the presentation and the other is our communication to council regarding, just kind of outlines our responsibilities for the audit and the city's responsibilities and goes through those items. First, for the first slide, touching base on those, the city's responsibility for, for the, related to the audit, the city is responsible for preparing the financial statements. We can assist, but ultimately it's the city's responsibility for those financial statements. City is responsible for designing and implementing internal controls to make sure there's not material misstatements contained in those statements and then making those records available for us to audit or, you know, for, for information for others that might need them. The third slide, our responsibilities for the audit. So we issue an opinion on the financial statements. Again, so that's that four pages in that report is our opinion on the financials. We plan the audit and conduct those, conduct the audit to provide reasonable assurance. We can't provide absolute assurance. If we did that, we would be here forever and you'd never get rid of us, Audrey. So we follow professional standards and provide reasonable, and provide assurance that, you know, we're not aware of any material misstatements in the financial statements. And then we're also responsible to communicate significant issues or other matters that might come up during the audit. Again, that's that communication letter. So for the financial statements issued for June 30th, 2024, we issued a unmodified opinion. That's the best opinion we can provide over the financial statements, meaning they are fairly presented in all material respects with generally accepted accounting principles. The next slide is an overview of the balance sheet for the general fund. One thing to note in the presentation, there is some financial statement page references. So if you, this stuff's consolidated here. If you want more information, the page numbers are there to go into the actual 200-page report. For the general fund, the main operating fund of the city, for financial reporting purposes, this also will include the income tax fund and the seniors fund. So anything on here is, has the general fund plus income tax plus seniors. So there might be some differences if you were comparing it to maybe some other information you had that had those separated. At June 30th, the assets listed there, city had around $28 million in cash as well as some restricted cash. That represents the unspent ARPA funds. And then receivables, those are further broken down into other areas, largest one being leases receivable for 5.7 million, income tax receivable for 1.5 million, and some money due from the state of Michigan from revenue sharing of approximately 1.3 million. Liabilities, there's unearned revenue included there. Majority of that is the, those unspent ARPA funds. Those would need to be obligated if they haven't already been by the end of this year. So I'm assuming that's already been taken care of where they've been spent. The other line item there, deferred inflows of resources, that's a, sort of like a liability, but not technically a liability. So that is mainly related to the leases. So you have that receivable, but it's long-term, so it's not revenue to the general fund. So it's, stays in that deferred inflow category. And there's also some unavailable revenue that just hasn't been received yet for the general fund to record it. If you were to take the assets, pay all the liabilities, back out the deferred inflows, you're left with what's fund balance there. That's broken down into several categories. Non-spendable really relates to the prepaid's. You've already spent the money, so you can't spend it again. Restricted, 7.8 million there roughly. The large portion of that is the income tax allocation of 7.2 million. Assigned, that, if you look on page 98 of the report, there's some more information on how that's broken down. That's primarily some money set aside for public safety and then capital projects. To the next slide. This is a visual representation of revenues in the general fund. So, and then on the bottom of it, comparison of budget to actual. So all of those items came in relatively close to the budget. Other includes several different captions if you were to look at page 44 and 45. The biggest variance from budget to actual there is the investment income. So the budget was a little bit, I guess, lower than what investments came in. So investments were higher than what you anticipated, which is a good thing. So that was about 1.1 million of that variance. The next slide, budget to actual comparison again, but this is for expenditures of the general fund. And you'll see the largest expenditure there being public safety. There was no budget variances where the city spent more than was anticipated. Public safety did, was under budget. That's primarily related to vacancies in those departments. And then in the other category, there was a under budget item for recreation and culture expenditures, primarily related to delays in urban forestry programs. So if you were to take the revenues and expenditures onto the next slide, you see what's left for the budgeted change in fund balance. So the final budget, the city anticipated an increase in fund balance of approximately five and a half million. The actual number was an increase in, of 10.1 million. Leaving an ending fund balance of the general fund of 27 and a half million at June 30th. The last part, piece of that at the bottom there, unassigned fund, unassigned fund balance as a percentage of one year's expenditures and transfers out is approximately 14%. So the, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends approximately two months of expenditures in unassigned, which would be about 16.7% roughly. So you guys are really close to that metric, and the city does have quite a bit of fund balance assigned to various projects. So I don't see any concern with that variance between what the government off, finance officers association recommendations.
I'm sorry.
The governmental.
You're not seeing any problem, but I guess I, so the government officers recommendation, who, who are they?
So that's an organization made up of approximately 20,000 members. The city's a member of that organization.
Nation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And so their recommendation is 16%?
Yeah, like 16.7, two months.
And we're at 14.7, 14%? And then you said, but there, there was another variable you threw in talking about that 14%?
The variable I threw in there is the assignments of fund balance that the city has. So you have a lot of stuff that already has assignments for and commitments for that is separate from that unassigned piece.
So is that, in theory, should be added to the 14%? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
So you, you would be way above that percentage metric.
Okay, thank you.
The next slide is a high-level overview of the enterprise funds of the city. Again, there's more information on these for, in page 45, or sorry, excuse me, 46 and 47. The, again, you take liability, the assets, back out your liabilities, it's left with net position. So all of the fund, the enterprise funds of the city reported positive net position. See, a big piece of that is the net investment in capital assets. So that's basically your capital assets minus any related liabilities. So that, that is net position, I guess, you really can't spend. So a big piece of that you want to look at is what's the unrestricted net position in those funds? And all of those report positive net position. Next slide. This is the, the statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in net position for those enterprise funds. We just kind of highlighted the operating income. So all of those funds reported a positive operating income, which is, you know, allows for cash flows to cover debt service expense. And you'll see a, a piece of that, the negative there in the sewerage fund is primarily related to interest expense on sewer bonds. All of those funds reported a positive increase in net position. At, next slide. This is a kind of five-year look back for the city's pension plan with MERS. At the end, and this, this is reported on the plan year-end, so December 31st of 2023. So it's in the city's report at June 30th, but the assets and liabilities of the pension plan are at December 31st. Total pension liability being the total amount the actuaries have determined the city would need to pay to cover its pension costs. Plan net position, those are the assets to cover those pension costs and leaving a net pension liability at the end of the year of 85 million. And the fund ban, or the plan net position being 62% funded, roughly 63% funded. This year, the city did receive the Protecting Michigan Pension Grant of approximately 7.6 million, helping to increase that funding percentage. The next slide. The actuary has determined, you know, how much the city should be contributing to make sure they're going to meet those financial requirements of the pension. This slide does not include the pension grant, so the blue there of the city's contribution, that would be actually what the city contributed, not including the 7.6 million. So that 7.6 million is in addition to this amount. So the required contribution was approximately nine and a half, you know, a little bit more than nine and a half million, and the city made an extra 5.9 to ensure they're meeting that, those requirements for the retirees. The next slide, similar to the pension, this is related to the city's healthcare defined benefit plan. Again, at, this is based on December 31st. So at the end of 2023, December 31st, 2023, the city's total liability was 34 million, 22.3 million in assets, leaving a net liability of 12.2 million, 12.3 million. Next slide. Just like the pension, the actuary has determined amount that the city should contribute to keep that plan funded. The city contributed, again, additional amount above that required, the, the contribution from the actuary. The next slide, this relates to the smaller bound document for federal expenditures. So for the year ended June 30th, 2023, or sorry, 2024, the city expended approximately 10.3 million in federal expenditures. We audited the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, so the ARPA funds. The city had spent approximately 8.1 million for June 2024. We issued an unmodified opinion on compliance, compliance, meaning we did not find any sort of, not any issues with compliance with that grant. That's all I have as far as presentation. I did just want to thank Audrey, Andrea and Justin as well, and the rest of the finance team. As Audrey had noted, it's a lot of work to do their normal jobs, plus deal with all of our requests to provide, you know, the insurance that we're providing, and we appreciate all their efforts. They do a fantastic job.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Any questions for the auditors or for the city manager? Go ahead, Dr. Allman.
On slide 14, the OPEB, retiree healthcare, I like the trend there in terms of the actuarial determined contributions. Are those going to continue to go down? Do we know? Or another way to ask the question is what, what's, what's driving down those required contributions?
Well, you're making, you've been historically making extra contributions over the past three years, so that would reduce, in theory, I guess, the future contributions.
But we can't predict whether next year is going to be even lower?
I mean, market fluctuations could change the net position of the plan. So I, yeah, I don't have a, a great answer to say.
I have some questions about the, the income tax. You had mentioned on slide five that the restricted fund balance is 7.7 million and most of that is income tax. And then you also pointed to page 98 of the, of the report where there's a, a similar number, which is 7.2 million under restricted funds for income tax. Is that the 602020 breakdown for police and, or for public safety and infrastructure? Is that what those restricted funds are for?
I believe so. The, the city's income tax. I'm struggling to think of the words here, but the, the rules are, I guess, the laws around the city's income taxes, that you have to use those funds for a specific purpose.
So then is it safe to say that, so overall, the income tax revenues were about 16 million, right, from, based on the pie chart? On your slide six, 16.2 million is the income tax. And 7.2 is restricted allocations. So does that mean that the, the difference between those two, which is about 9 million, is that what's allocated to the, to reimbursing the general fund for the loss in property taxes? This may not be a question for you. This may be a question for, for Audrey.
So whatever has not been allocated is what's sitting in fund balance at this point in time. We have to withhold a little bit of reserve because when we get to the tail end, if the charter, you know, if the, the years expire, we still have to reimburse the general fund for property taxes, but we won't have income tax in that year. So we're, we're holding back for that final year to reimburse the general fund. But anything that we can allocate is going to go that 602020.
So I guess my question is, what I'm looking for is some way to compute the net contribution to the income tax to our budget in the past year after accounting for administration fees, which is what we pay the third-party vendor to process, and also the reimbursement to the general fund for the loss in property taxes because of the reduction in the property tax mileage, which is part of the whole package. So that's what I'm trying to figure out where that number is in all these numbers.
On page 114, this might be helpful. It breaks the larger general fund down into what we colloquially call the general fund, income tax fund and seniors fund. So you'll see specifically the revenue in and then the expenditures out of the income tax fund. But you have to kind of go down to the bottom to see the transfers out, but that, I can give you that, that breakdown, but that transfers out includes transfers to general fund for property tax reimbursement and for the public safety allocation, but it also is transfers to major local streets or the capital improvement funds for those pieces of the allocation. But I can, I can provide you the specific allocations over the last particular year or in totality, because we can track that.
So I looked at page 114, and the numbers that caught my eye, there's total revenues in the income tax actual column, which is 16.2 million, right up toward the top. And then under expenditures, income tax, there's 5.5 million, which is different from the 7.2 million. So I had a question about what that 5.5 million was.
So that is administrative costs and the portion of the supplemental pension that is paid out of the income tax fund, because we did that portion out of the general fund. So it's mostly administrative costs and supplemental pension.
And supplemental pension, okay. All right. So then the revenues, which is revenues over expenditures under total expenditures, that's 10.6 million, which is basically the 16.2 minus the 5.5?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I guess this is an ask potentially for future iterations. If we could have some way, either in, in a bar chart as part of a presentation or somewhere in the report, whatever is appropriate, some easy way to, to compute what the net benefit of the income tax is after subtracting the reimbursement for lost property taxes and administrative costs. Because I think one of the things we need to do as a community is understand what the net benefit of the income tax is to the city, and I think it's substantial. In other words, what is the money that we are currently collecting from the income tax that we could not otherwise collect if we didn't have it? I think having a clear representation of that would be enormously helpful, both in terms of this process, but also the budget process later on. And it's something that we've talked about in the past year periodically is how to quantify that. And can we quantify it in a straightforward way so that we can communicate to the public what the income tax is really buying us? I think it's really important.
Do we not do that in that letter at the beginning of this document where we say, after five years, 22.9 million went to supplemental pension payments, 7.6 went to public safety, and 7.6 went to current and future infrastructure projects? Because that total 38.1 million, I'm assuming the difference between that and the total collected is what's been supporting the intent of the income tax.
And I think that's a great start, but having it be in multiple places and also broken out by year so that we know how much that net was in a given year, so that we can track it over the years, because I think would be interesting to see, you know, during COVID, everything changed, right, because people, you know, were working, weren't working here. And it'd be useful, I think, to know to what extent those revenues have recovered since then on a year-by-year basis. So I think having that laid out in a clearly accessible way would be, would be very helpful. I did have one other question of income tax related. On page 174 of the report, and I had this question last year also. So this is a helpful breakdown of tax dollars by resident taxpayers and non-resident taxpayers. That by itself is help, very helpful. But the total for all returns for the income tax is, is 10 million, which is different from the 16 million. And I understand that this is calendar year and the other, the other amounts are, are fiscal year. But I'm still not sure where that missing $6 million is.
Let's not, let's not use the term.
Sorry.
Please.
I did not say that.
Especially with the auditors here in the room.
Yeah.
Let's not do that.
Yeah, I'd have to walk through a, a way to roll forward the calendar year to the fiscal year. I, I don't have a calculation for you.
So my question is related to the idea that it, it could be that the calendar year includes only certain months. But if the calendar year includes 12 months, then I don't, then the way I'll phrase it is I'm not quite sure why that number isn't at least closer to 16 million, because that was the total revenue from a 12-month period.
Okay, so Mr., Dr. Altman's raised some good issues, and it's, one of my bugaboo's about these reports is trying to, trying to explain and cut through for the common person exactly what the bottom line is. And so I think the intent of the questions is clear for both the city manager and for the finance department, which is, in the future, I assume that what you're saying is, for the record, yes, Dr. Altman, we can absolutely give you those figures. That's, first of all, am I correct?
Sure.
Okay. And so then our ask is, please give us those figures and give those figures to the auditors in the future, so we specifically know that. And then I think the other part of this problem-solving exercise is, I think, Mr. City Manager, it would be helpful at other times during the year to give us some sort of a brief, simple report answering the questions that Dr. Altman has so properly raised, so that our taxpayers and our citizens can know at a fairly frequent interval by going one place, rather than going through 180 pages, and go one place and see, this is in fact what the income tax has done. Is that an appropriate commentary, Doctor?
That is a, an accurate summary. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, Doctor, or Mr. Meadows, Dr. Meadows?
As a JD, not a real good doctor, but I, I do want to, you know, second a little bit of what was just transpired here, and I'd like to add one, one, I guess, category to that report, which might be coming, because I want to know with regard to the income tax, for each of the years it's been in, in, in place, how much is coming from residents and how much is coming from non-residents? I think the city manager is in the process of, I think, putting together a presentation for the charter committee on the, on the income tax, and I would like that information in there as well. I think it's important for the public to know that we're not just relying on our residents to pay down our OPEB and pension obligations, we're relying on non-residents as well. And I do have a question regarding slide 10, which shows the operating income that comes off of the automobile parking system, the sewage disposal system, and the water supply system. I guess this, this might be a question for staff as well. Do those, that operating income, that essential, looks like a profit basically from the systems, is that available to pay down debt that still exists within each of those systems?
That's the city manager answer, I think.
Yes, you could apply it towards debt, or you could apply it to improvements at these facilities.
Okay, but we do have that option?
Yes.
Okay. That was the question for that. And then I guess this is for the auditors. You mentioned the over 7 million state grant, is it a state grant that, that's coming in? And is that in limbo, or did you just not include it here? We received it. Where's that at?
So the city received that already, so that's already factored into the planned net position of the pension.
Okay. All right. Wanted to know that. And just for clarification, our OPEB and pension obligation overall are unfunded liability. Between the two of them, are we looking at about $97 million?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure I was looking at that correctly, and that's it for me. Thanks for all your hard work and all the information you gave us this evening.
Any other questions from council? Thanks, gentlemen, for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, audience, our finance staff, appreciate you being here. Okay, moving ahead, item 6.3, presentation and discussion of the 2025-2029 Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Greenways Plan.
And just for the record, it's my understanding, based on the staff report, that you're giving us this, this information, looking forward to a vote on our first meeting in January to approve this plan, because that's a state requirement or state or federal requirement? Is that correct?
Yes, we are. That is correct.
I just wanted to put that in context. So this will be back in front of us in our first business meeting in January of 2025.
Yes, thank you for having us tonight. Kathy DeChambeau, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Arts. Really pleased to introduce Bob Ford from Spalding de Decker. Bob is the lead landscape architect for Spalding de Decker and is our consultant on our five-year parks plan. I also have our assistant director, Justin Dranke, with me tonight. So we're each going to take a, a portion of this, but really the intent is for you to be able to give us feedback on the plan. Currently, we still have time that we could integrate more feedback into the plan, make changes based on, on what we hear from you tonight. And then again, we'll be back in January where we do need to move forward with approval of the plan to meet the state's deadlines for the plan to be submitted. So I want to turn it over to Bob to start out with, and we're all going to take a piece of this and then answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here again with you, working on another five-year recreation plan, to be certified by the state, so it qualifies you for funding from state funds. I've been working alongside of these great people here and yourselves for the past 40 years off and on, and I really want to appreciate and give my appreciation for that. Having worked at Patriarch Park, Bailey Park, projects at the Valley Court that we're working on currently, and the soccer complex, and bringing those projects into reality. And just to do a benchmark in time, we did the first leg of the Northern Tier Trail way back. So thank you very much for all of that. The plan guides decision-making and planning for recreation facilities and programs throughout the entire city. It benefits everybody, includes an inventory of existing facilities and resources, and identifies community recreation and open space needs for the public. It sets an action plan in motion for the next five years, and this repeats every five years, as long as you want to become eligible for funding from the state of Michigan. It is required to be adopted and updated and maintained for grants. The city of East Lansing has been awarded just under $4.8 million in the MDNR grants since 1989, of which 3.9 million is from the Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Program. The deadline to adopt the plan is February 1 of 2025, and the information in the sections within the plan are shaped by and comply with the MDNR requirements. It's gone above and beyond in a few areas. They don't require as much public involvement as we have, or has the city has undertaken. The plan was developed throughout 2024, kicking off in June 13th, 2024. Spalding de Decker completed the inventory of the parks and the trails and developed initial recommendations in consideration of the past plans and departmental priorities. The goals and action plans were refined throughout the project and discussion with the staff, other key stakeholders, and consideration of available funding and strategies on hand. And there also was a robust community and stakeholder input, which Kathy will talk about.
Thank you, Bob. So as Bob said, we actually went above and beyond what the requirements were for the MDNR submittal for community input. It was really important to us to find and approach community input in a multitude of ways, and really try to reach as many folks in the community as we could. So I just want to go through all the ways in which we reached out to the community to get input on this plan. We had a community survey, and that survey was available from roughly August through the end of October. We had 589 responses on the survey alone. We had a postcard mailing that achieved about a 17.4% response rate. We had two community meetings. The Every Plan Everywhere All at Once meeting here in this room on October 7th was a really great event because we brought all the plans together for that evening. I think we had about 150 folks, and we got a lot of great feedback. We had more people sign up for the survey, we just were able to talk to folks, really great evening. We repeated an open house with just our five-year plan and the Valley Court Connectivity Plan on November 18th. We had a little smaller group, but we got really great feedback for that night as well. We had a 30-day public review and comment on the draft plan, and so the plan was available in hard copy here at Hannah Community Center. It was also available at the library. We put in the city pulse exactly where people could view the plan, plus we had a link that you could go to in a QR code. And so we gave a public notice about that, and then that culminated in a public hearing at the Parks and Rec Commission Meeting. We also had several efforts to ensure that we were really reaching deeper into the community, and so we did postcard invitations to complete the survey and attend that October 7th open house, and we focused those postcards in CDBG eligible track, census tracts. That was very intentional on our part. We also reached out to the families enrolled in our school-age childcare programs and camps. Anyone who signed up to receive our newsletters also received notice. And if you are on a mailing list for our community events or our festivals, you also were notified. And we sent, we sent a specific invite to our partners at Mid-Michigan Autism Association, who we've been working with for a couple of years now. You probably saw our really beautiful yard signs in every park in the city and along the trails that we put up, and then we took back down also in a very responsible way, but we had QR codes on those signs. We had in-person outreach at the East Lansing Farmers Market, we had media releases, social media posts that we actually boosted, had paid to boost so that we could get more response. We had articles in the Parks and Recreation and Arts e-newsletter, the city's e-dialogue, and we provided the survey link and the QR code to the Fall, in the Fall Connect magazine, which went out to over 4,000 households. We sent copies of the draft plan to the Commission on the Environment, Seniors Commission, Planning Commission, Transportation Commission for comment. And I just want to call out our Parks and Rec Advisory Commission commissioners, because they actually started work on this plan over a year ago. In July of 2023, we handed them a packet that contained all the information from the previous plan for every park in the city, and we charged them with homework, and we said, we want you to visit every park and write notes, and bring those notes back as we start going through this process. That was really valuable information, and it allowed them to get ahead of this process and then feel very involved in it as we really started talking about the inventories that Spalding de Decker did. And, and that way, they could also talk with their, within their communities, their neighborhoods, and get feedback. So that was a really helpful process, and, and I think they did a really great job with that task, doing it over several months. So that is a summary of all the community input and the ways we engaged with the community in this plan over the course of the last six months or so.
So based on all of that community input, we've developed the very robust document that you have in your agenda packets, but I would like to just call your attention to a couple of specific sections. Section six is our goals and action plan area, so that's going to outline kind of the high-level goals and guidance that we as a department will use in future decision-making. Page number in your packet is page number 91 for that section. What we've done is categorize our goals based on how they align with the overarching categories for the city's strategic priorities. What we see is that they most align with recreation and cultural opportunities, with good governance, strong, safe, and diverse community, and with environmental sustainability. At a high level, our goals are identified as inclusion and belonging. We want to make sure that we remove barriers to participation in our programs and our facilities. Another goal is capacity, which is to maintain and improve where appropriate the available experiences in our parks, trails, and programs. We have community integration, which is to provide programs, events, and amenities that are responsive to the needs of our community, and stewardship. We want to responsibly manage the land, facilities, and resources that are entrusted to us. Under those, there's more detailed objectives that give a little bit more guidance as to how we want to enact those goals. And then those further carry into section seven, which starts on page 95, which, as an action plan, is essentially a capital improvement plan, and this is kind of outlining ways that we want to invest in our parks, trails, and public facilities over the next five years. I'll, I'll put this back in the context of what this document is, which is going to the state so that we are eligible for funding for capital projects. So we need to kind of forecast what some of our priorities are for those investments. What we have is just over 6.2 million in park, trail, and public space improvement projects that have been identified. Compared to the last five years, the last five years was just under 8.3. was just under 8.3 million, so we've seen a little bit less. But it's more than what we've done in the 15 years prior to that, from 2005 to 2019. So still maintaining a robust investment in improving our parks, trails, and public facilities. And I want to remind you that this is a planning and a decision-making tool. Adopting this plan doesn't commit us to adopting, to paying for any of these specific projects. But what this does is kind of guide how we want to be thinking about and show that we see what we want to pay attention to in those facilities. On the funding side of things, many of the projects do list the general fund as the funding source, but we are able to blend multiple funding sources for projects. We've done that very successfully in the past, and we will continue to leverage those funding opportunities, such as the DNR grants, such as the income tax, County Trails and Parks Milage, or the Community Development Block Grant. Some of those are really hard to project out. The income tax allocations are still quite new, and it's kind of hard to forecast what employment's going to look like in the city over the next five years to be able to have an accurate forecast of that. So that kind of allocating income tax and some of these other grants to specific projects really is going to happen more during that annual budget process. And with that, I think we'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for educating me at the last meeting about the reason we're doing this. So I, for one, am prepared to move ahead at our next meeting to vote this in, especially the six, the Item 6 and Item 7 in the report, the goals and objectives, and the action plan. Having said that, are there any questions? Yes, sir, Dr. Allman.
I have a question about Valley Court Park and the Action Plan. For years '25, '26, and '27, the project descriptions are listed as TBD there, and they're the only ones, as far as I can tell, that are listed as TBD. Could you say a little bit more about if there's?
Sure. We all want to jump in on this one.
Okay, great.
So as you're aware, Bob is also working with us on the Valley Court Connectivity Project and Master Plan, and so that's kind of dovetailing into this project. We can have some more information in there. But that's really going to be determined by finishing out this public engagement and this plan. And so that's why we're leaving that somewhat fluid in this plan, because that is still ongoing.
And I would like to call your attention specifically to page 82, where we have a rendering of the kind of initial results from that visioning process. So we've kind of put together some initial thoughts on what a redevelopment plan could look like for Valley Court. We just haven't gotten to the point of assigning numbers to specific years on that.
Is there, for the purposes of applying for grants and so forth, is there any harm in leaving it as TBD, or is there any benefit in filling in the details?
There's many line items that are to be determined later. The DNR appreciates the ideas that are being circulated, and they realize that projects are in flux, and it is not necessary. I do think we'll have some numbers for you either before or shortly after the year, the end of this year.
And those might be in the final plan, then?
Yes, we can include those in the final plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Meadows.
One. The, I think when we had the public meeting in this room, we had three different renderings of potential changes to Valley Court. I don't know whether everybody has seen them, so if you could share those at some point, I think it might be helpful.
Okay. Anything else?
I just want to thank you for your intentional outreach, because if we want to be reflective of a diverse community and talk about how to promote access and integration, you have to outreach to your community. And so I appreciate the census tract reference. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 6.4, Discussion of Proposed Security Deposit and First Month Rent Assistance Program Using Community Development Block Grant CDBG Dollars. We have a report that the council has read. What would you like to tell us, Mr. Apostol?
Good evening, Council. Matt Apostol, Community and Economic Development Specialist here with the City of East Lansing. Yep, so tonight I'm here to briefly speak about the staff proposal for a substantial amendment to the city's fiscal year 2025 Community Development Block Grant Program budget. Just to provide a little bit of context, that this came about because after budgeting funds for the program in fiscal year 2024, it was determined that one of our subrecipients, Grit, Glam, and Guts, as their program was currently structured, would be unable to meet the compliance measures required by the CDBG program. So we had this open budget in fiscal year 2025 under the Public Services Cap, which gives us a lot of flexibility in how those funds can be used, which is why we came with the proposal for, next slide, to reallocate those funds, $3,695 in fiscal year 2025 CDBG funding from Grit, Glam, and Guts to pilot a program that would provide security deposit and first month rent assistance to low-to-marit income households. The idea for this program sort of sprung out of the city's 2023 assessment of fair housing. And just for context on this program nationally, based on conversations with our U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, this is an extremely unique program to be doing with CDBG funds. In fact, in our research, I was unable to find a single other community that does this program using CDBG funding. There are communities that do similar programs with other sources of HUD funding, but no other CDBG entitlement community is using CDBG dollars for it, which is cool. I attached the draft guidelines for this program to the Agenda Item Report, which have been reviewed both by HUD as well as our city attorney. Generally speaking, it would provide eligible households with security deposits and first month rent assistance up to $1,500. The program would only be available to low-to-marit income households, meaning that they are at or below the 80% area median income, or AMI, for the metropolitan statistical area. We also included rent limits based on MISHDA's recommendations for households at or below 80% AMI. And finally, based on conversations with HUD and other communities that have done a similar program using those other sources of HUD funding, this program would require that applicants provide a matching payment equivalent to 25% of the payments that our program is subsidizing. So essentially, if the first month rented security deposit was $2,000, we could provide $1,500, but that applicant needs to provide $500.
Okay, so we're talking about $3,695, correct?
For fiscal year '25, yes.
And I don't, I defer to the rest of the council. I don't really want to spend a whole lot of time on $3,695 tonight. I understand you may want us to move ahead on this at a later date, which is fine with me. But understanding that we're doing this as kind of a pilot thing here, where did all these guidelines come from, and who in the city is going to administer this in a way that is going to be fair and not the subject of controversy by those who might be applying for this assistance?
The current plan, well, the guidelines were drafted by myself and other staff at the city.
From what?
Based on other programs that we saw administering similar benefits under other HUD programs, but then we co-opted them to CDBG.
Because nobody's using their CBDG funds for this, correct?
From what we can tell now.
I understand. Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry I interrupted you. And so you took it from other programs, and who's going to do this process at the city?
We plan on administering it in-house.
Well, who's the "we"? Where?
Me.
Okay. Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, I've got a few. The, well, the way the pilot program is set up, first of all, I'll just say, I want this to be a permanent program, not a pilot program. I think we have the resources through CDBG funds that maybe we need to put towards this. We've had other programs that are sort of like this in the past, and they seem to have gone by the wayside. So to the extent that we can look at this sort of as a long-term project for us, I think we should, we should take a look at it. Having said that, basically at $1,500 a person, we get two people out of this program, the way that it's set up at this point. Was there a requirement by HUD that it be in the amounts that we have right now? In other words, the combination of the first month rent plus the security deposit in that way? Were they insisting that it be this large? In other words, that it's not 500 as opposed to 15, or something like that?
HUD did not give us a recommendation in terms of the dollar amount. The dollar amount was based on the MISHDA rent limits that we received from MISHDA.
I'll just say that my personal preference as a pilot would be to have a lower amount obtainable by each of the individuals, and we could still provide some assistance. But I'd like to see it go more, to more than two people, if that's what we have. Even if we went 500, we'd be talking about six people. So it, that seems to me to be a better number for a pilot program, to see how it is. That's just my view, not everybody else's. And specifically with regard to, I guess it's page two of the proposal, you talk about the security deposit being a one-time benefit, but you don't say that the rental assistance will be a one-time benefit. And I'm wondering whether that was intentional, or that HUD wanted it that way.
I'm looking at the top of page two of the program guidelines, that it says first month rent is a one-time payment provided directly to the property owner, and then security deposit is a one-time payment provided directly to the property owner.
Okay. I was talking about this paragraph, which only mentions one of those. So to the extent we can make that consistent, as long as we're bringing it up.
Will do.
And then, you know, if we are going to have a program like this, looking at the 80% AMI that's also on page two, I mean, I'm a little nervous about providing assistance to people who are making $51,000 a year. So I don't know if I'm reading that right, or whether there's some other number that I'm not seeing here. But, and of course, you know, looking at the rents that we see in Clinton and Ingham County, in East Lansing, of course, is fueled by the demand from the university. Can you tell me whether any student would qualify for this who, for instance, is not getting a Pell Grant? In other words, is clearly an independent who is living on their own?
It would need to be a very unique circumstance for a traditional, say, undergraduate student to qualify for this program. I'll give the example, say, me and two friends are living in a rental house. If we wanted to apply for the security deposit and first month rent assistance, we would all need to not be on our parents' taxes. We would need to be independent from them on their taxes. And then our household income combined from our, say, part-time jobs would still need to be below that 80% AMI. The likelihood of that is very low. And then obviously, if somebody was a dependent on their parents' taxes, then that, those parents' income would be counted into that household income qualification.
Got it. I think I had one more. Just a second. I gotta, I wrote it down on the sheet. The pages that talk about the return to the city at the end of the rental period, I just, I'm not catching the math there, but I'm going to rely on what you have here. But I'd ask you just a second, take a second look at that. And that's all I have. And I'm not going to make a big deal out of either, you know, as a pilot program, but I stated my concerns, and to the extent that we can address those, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Just to make the record clear, I was the one that referred to it as a pilot program. I don't think it's in this material, so I don't want to assign that to Matt. Dr. Allman, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mayor Proton?
I'll just say thank you. It's, I think, an exciting opportunity. I think it's really difficult, obviously, with $3,600 and some change, and looking at a program like this. But I'm excited what you learn and where we can go from here.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 6.4, Discussion of, excuse me. Whoa, we're past that one. Item 6.5, Discussion on Gas-Powered Leaf Blowers. Mr. Walls.
Good evening. Cliff Walls, DPW, here to support discussions around potential restrictions of gas-powered leaf blowers. I have a lot of information in the packet to hope to support that discussion. I think that was good, because I moderated a conference for the eight hours today, and my brain's about fried. So hopefully, I won't be as wordy as I can sometimes be. But I'm here to support and navigate this discussion with you as you see fit. But I don't want to duplicate anything that I've already spelled out. So I'm here and ready.
Questions from Mr. Walls?
I have some.
Yes, sir.
Questions. So first of all, thank you for the thoughtful memo. It puts a lot of important stuff together, some of the, based on discussions we had at COE, and also other materials that you brought into it. I do have a question. At the Every Plan Everywhere All at Once event, you had a survey, which was sort of this fun thing where you could put thing tokens into a bin. What was, what was the result of that concerning support for banning leaf blowers?
So that was a one-question survey, basically saying, do you support this path or not? It was 27 to 10, 27 in favor. And I apologize for neglecting to put that into the memo. But granted, that was, you know, a pretty self-curated audience. You only get people who are exceptionally engaged at those type of events. But it was, you know, definitely dominated by the, you know, people supportive of this.
And my, I mean, my take on the feedback we've gotten is that it generally is supportive of going in this direction. We get, we've gotten a few emails. We heard about it. I heard about it a year and a half ago when I was talking to people at Doors and so forth. We've gotten, I think, some feedback from people who are concerned that it would impose a burden on the work that they have to do in the yard. But it does seem to me that there is some, some public support for this. You mentioned the possibility of the city leading by example, and potentially accelerating the transition away from small engines to electric engines. And the way I read your memo is to say that a bunch of the equipment, the gas-powered equipment we have right now is in good condition. It would last a while. And so the transition, if we let it play out on a replacement basis, would take a while. But I think if we're going to pursue any sort of phase-out, it does make sense for the city to bite the bullet first and show that it can be done. My impression, reading some of the data from Ann Arbor, is that the ROI on this transition is actually pretty quick. It looks like some of the firms that jumped into the transition were getting returns on investment in a year or two. And I guess my question is, you note in your memo that you don't have data yet on the savings from maintenance and fuel and other items related, other expenses related to gas-powered equipment. But what is your, what is your thought about the ROI for the city if we accelerate the transition process and maybe discard or sell some equipment before, before we ultimately have to replace it? It sounds like we might actually not lose that much if we go that route.
Yeah. And I, I do want to note that those estimates, you know, I was trying to give an idea of the scale. Like, if we had string trimbers, blowers, hedge trimmers, pole saws, all using the same battery ecosystem, we wouldn't need to buy two per. So some of those numbers are going to be inflated. That was just, I had to pick a number. But that, you know, the cost would probably be less on the batteries. I'm not sure, like, in a commercial, industrial setting, municipal setting, that what the life cycle is on those batteries. Is this something that we'd have to replace every five years, every two seasons? But I think, you know, some, I don't know if the data, or I know that the data doesn't exist in terms of, you know, how many hours are the mechanic spending working spending working on changing a carburetor? I think some of that stuff has, you know, Ron's talked about getting more counting onto those kind of small tasks. So we know this information. But a lot of it, you know, it's, somebody grabs a gas can, fills it up. Do we know it went to string trimmer one or string trimmer five? No. So it's kind of hard to make some assumptions, but I think just from, you know, the research that if it can do the operational need, if we can achieve what we're asking it to do, then, you know, they're low maintenance and very simple machines, you know, you have a battery and button to squeeze. You know, there's a lot less that can go wrong with it. You don't have to change your filters. And it's really hard to make that assumption of what, you know, the, the ROI would be. But like you mentioned, those case studies, I think that it's probably there.
And it looked to me like the, the ballpark cost for, for replacing all our equipment and transitioning right away would be about $100, $150,000.
Yeah, give or take. And those were using the best guesses that I can make for equivalent equipment. You know, if we have an 18-inch gas chainsaw, well, I found, what is the steel, like the brand steel equivalent for their large professional-grade chainsaw? So, you know, it's, it's within $30,000, I would think, between the, the battery considerations like I talked about. But it would definitely be more than purchasing gas equivalents.
Do, do we know anything from Ann Arbor's example, or there was at least one other jurisdiction in, in Michigan that, that is sort of underway with a phase out? Do we know anything about how that's going, whether residents are at peace with it? Do we have any sort of feedback from, or could we reach out to people in those jurisdictions for, for that experience?
Reach out to them to see. I haven't seen anything in, in particular, but I know, you know, this, kind of like us, they've been hearing about it. They, you know, this wasn't, this was probably more bottom-up restriction, you know? The, the energy behind this came from the neighborhoods. And like I have referenced in here, I think a lot of that has to do with remote work. You know, I hear about it. My, my wife complains about it. My family in town, you know, I work in the office, so I don't hear it, but, you know, the summertime. There's a lot of people like that. And I think that that's why you're starting to see these over the last three, four years, you know, around the country.
And my, my last question, I don't want to hog the floor on this, but you're, you take pains in your memo to say you're not yet making a policy recommendation, right? This is for discussion. But, so would the next step be for you to formulate a policy recommendation?
If that's the, the direction of council. You know, I think part of the, the reason to bring this to a discussion meeting was to take your temperature on this as a body. And you kind of see generally what path or approach you want to take to these comments and concerns that we're receiving from the public and from, you know, the Commission on the Environment. So to answer a question that your staff would do as, as directed, I, I wanted to make sure that I was clear that there, I didn't have a specific policy proposal, more so because, you know, I, there's a lot of different ways you could take this. You know, there's going to be financial, you know, costs associated with not just the transition on a municipal level, but, you know, the enforcement is a big component of this, too. That's a big question. And so kind of having an idea of where council's at with this would help inform, you know, like the, how robust a program or how robust of an approach the city would take or should take.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Meadows?
Well, one thing I want to know about, first of all, I completely agree that we have to take care of this at the city level to provide guidance to our citizens that we mean this to take place. So I think having us do it first would be an advisable thing. And even if it costs us $150,000, I think we can find that. But I, I do want to know in, in terms of like using a chainsaw, is there, are we capable of using an electric chainsaw, battery-powered chainsaw in the same manner? And do we get the same power from that electric chainsaw as we may need from, and is it available, I guess, for, for you all, that, that we might need for, that, that power that we might get from a, a gas-powered one? If you know.
The operations team would have a better understanding of that, but from what I know, and, you know, I have a, an electric chainsaw actually, and I don't do much with it. I'm not cutting down, you know, storm debris, but it's, you know, never let me down. But I, it, like some of the, I think you're going to see more of the performance drop in the, the blower category. So looking at the professional-grade backpack blower, these are kind of rough numbers. I'm not remembering exactly, but it's somewhere in the 900 CFM, like the amount of air that it's blowing, 953, something like that. The best you could get out of an electric, which has a $1,500 battery and costs $700, it's much more costly, for the electric backpack commercial grade, was somewhere in the mid-500 CFM range. So you're getting the same speed of air, but not the same volume of air. And so the amount of work that our parks division and streets are using these blowers for, you know, I'm sure that's probably appropriate. I don't know if Ron would agree with that. You know, it's not like we're typically blowing wet leaves across a, a large field to clear it. It's clearing clippings off of, of, you know, the Hana sidewalk and parking lots and stuff like that. So I think probably for what the city is doing, the electric equivalents are likely able to perform at the same level. But that's, that's my take. And we got the expert coming up.
Obviously, normal, like mowing operations, things like that, there's easier applications because he's exactly right. You're blowing grass clippings off sidewalks, things like that. Where we'd get into more trouble is the bigger operations, our bulk leaf program, obviously a large storm event where we're running chainsaws a, a lot. Our string trimmers run, you know, all day, every day in the summertime. So those, those would be some challenges with the, with the electric and, and batteries and how we'd keep that stuff charged. So we'd have to work all that out. We do have some examples to go by. We've, we've had several staff. MSU was kind enough to put together a, a presentation for everybody and a lot of staff went to that. And they gave some pros and cons to several of them. They're also, it can be quite heavy. The backpack blowers and things are some that they bought that they don't really use because they're too heavy. So we, we would be looking to, to kind of learn from what other people have already done to not make some of those same mistakes. But it would be a, it would be a trial and error, but they would be easily applicable to certain operations and a little harder on others.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. I note that the Palo Alto piece that you hung out, they, they passed theirs in like 2005. And they're now sending out a notice saying, you know, we're going to start writing tickets on this if, if you don't comply. So probably some lead-in in anything that we do would be appropriate, especially if the city has already embraced this. But I'm, I'm not sure whether having you go home and, and craft up an ordinance at this point in time is the right thing. I think sort of a game plan for implementation would be more useful for us at this point, that we can later convert into, to an ordinance of some kind. But having the information about each of these tools that you guys use all the time would be, I think, useful for council to, to review as well. But that's, that's just my position with it. I think, I think we need a little more work before we implement anything and a little more information.
So, thank you. I have two questions. The first one is, have you, I, I read in the thing that you're talking about, you've talked to MSU and they've given presentations, but has MSU grounds department made the switch?
Yes. And that's extended into their mowers as well.
Okay. So the answer is yes. So they're the closest, biggest resource we'd have for how this works. And I assume from a budgetary standpoint, they have facts and figures in terms of how much that costs and what the continuing cost is. So if you could give us more information about that as we sort of think through all this, that I think that would be helpful. And then the second thing is, I, I didn't read this in your report, maybe it's there. What happens to the used batteries, the used-up batteries?
The, you can recycle them at your Home Depot and places that you, you take it, like any other kind of lithium ion battery and there's recycling.
What happens? Okay. So they get recycled, then what happens?
They reuse it and, you know, as much as they can reuse and put into new battery cells they do. As far as the numbers on like what percentage efficiency of that process, I don't know offhand, but...
So essentially it goes to scrap. The scrap dealer takes out the, the lithium or whatever the valuable thing is, just like a catalytic converter, something like that?
I think it's, I think it's more efficient than...
Okay. Could you check on that for us, please?
Yeah.
Anything else? Any other questions? Yes, sure.
I think outside of leaf blowers, lawn equipment, we've talked about cities fleets in the past as well. If we're serious, I think about moving towards net zero, et cetera, is looking at health impacts, cost, conversion of all the things over time. So then that would help inform us of what the right approach would be. Because there's obviously a number of departments that this would impact.
Okay. Go, go ahead.
Final comment. So I, I think that I, I would certainly favor a cautious movement ahead on this issue, in part so that the community understands that this is an interest of the cities and that they have a chance to get used to it and adapt to the, to the possible change. And what will help with that is if we can pull off the transition ourselves in a successful way to show that, that it can be, it can be done.
So...
I, I don't think that was a question. I think that was a comment.
That was a comment.
Yeah. So I...
I had a follow-up question kind of to that. Like for this upcoming budget cycle, would you like us to?
I think we'd like to have the city manager think through what he wants to do based on the commentary from the council. And the city manager will direct as necessary. Is that fair?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Appreciate it. Good report. Okay. Item 6.6, discussion on noise. I think this is you, Mr. Bellman?
Actually, I'm happy to lob it your way. This is actually follow-up by...
Yes, is no surprise to me, but it's your report.
So this was a follow-up request by several members of council to really have a set aside discussion on noise issues or concerns, health implications in the city of East Lansing. Several of you heard it while you were running for office and then, of course, continued to receive communications to city council via email and public speaking. So what was done was I asked city attorney to compile all of the city regulations impacting all noise violations under our current ordinances, which you have in the communication in the packet, and summary of the various sections of those ordinances.
Okay. So I, I guess I have this question after going through this and, and maybe we can't answer this tonight, but it occurs to me and that going through these things and having been in the profession I've been in, that to the extent people have complaints about noise, that there are ordinances already in existence, specifically the nuisance ordinance, and I think the other one is the 81, I think, which would allow a citizen to prefer a complaint against somebody that makes a noise that the citizen believes is beyond the pale. And so I just would suggest that it may not be necessary to reinvent the wheel on some of this stuff, that we may already have ordinances that can be worked with and/or modified to some extent. So I just throw that out there for the discussion of the council. Questions or comments or where do you want to go on this, folks?
Well, I, I have a question, which is, what's the next step? So we've, we've heard a lot of frustration, right? It's a steady, it's, it's more than a steady trickle, right? It's a steady reaction that we have from the community. And it's been going on now for a few years. I, I became aware of this issue really during the, the pandemic, when suddenly there was just all this noise that I don't remember having heard before. And my question at the time is, you know, why are, why are we tolerating this? And I guess that's still my question. Why are we, why are we tolerating this? And what's, what's the plan?
Well, I think the plan is up to the council. So...
Let me, if I may. So Monday, as is all Mondays, we have steering committee, which is management's weekly meeting. And at the meeting, Clark Wick shared an experience about noise along Saginaw Road and to interim chief, Jim Brown. And a lot of times, the police department's not aware of certain noises because residents aren't calling in to file complaints. We were aware of some issues of drag racing, and I use air quotes on that, along Michigan Avenue and Grand River, because several residents raised those concerns. So police department, short-staffed, was able to provide some additional monitoring over the last couple of weeks. Data didn't provide any enforcement efforts because that activity wasn't occurring when they had officers monitoring the area. So yes, they want residents call in and notify dispatch or the desk of the problem so that they can dispatch officers to at least start some of that enforcement activity.
Can we, can't we record? Can't we collect our own data?
When you say, what do you, I guess, could you elaborate on what you mean by record or collect our own?
Exactly my question. Because everybody has a cell phone. And so since everybody's walking around with a cell phone, if they see something, they can record it on their cell phone. Is that what you're referring to, Dr. Altman?
No. My, my question was, okay, so if we hear that there are concerns about drag racing on Michigan or Saginaw, you know, I hear it at, I don't know, 10 o'clock at night from my house. I hear it mid-afternoon. I'm not on the spot. I'm several blocks away. But if we get enough reports, can we put sound cameras up in those locations and just collect some, some data to, to know that these things are real and where they're happening prior to enforcement?
So we could investigate the cost of acquiring technology to record or at least monitor, but then you would have to have someone, again, collect that data, analyze that data, and then develop a plan. The biggest challenge for ELPD, they're short-staffed.
Yeah.
They have more calls, they have more issues, then they have personnel to resolve. And I think we've seen that over the last, as you say, through the pandemic. You know, we, we even discuss some of the vehicle noise could be addressed if we enforce traffic laws. You know, we see enough vehicles ignoring red lights, stop signs, you know, speed limits. All of that is increasing the noise associated with vehicles and could be a direct enforcement, but personnel has to be available.
Please.
Councilman Altman, for a question of my colleagues and or our city manager, I want to be clear in terms of the problem we're trying to solve. What I've heard most about noise has been around traffic-related noise, whether that's drag racing or, I don't even know, they were running circles around you, Mr. Overbay, so I don't know what to call that. That I've heard, I know Councilwoman Watson mentioned leaf blowers, and it didn't click with me until our very own Cliff Wells mentioned more people are working from home, and so you notice those lawn crews out there. So that clicks. Are there other instances, either you've heard at the city or that we've heard in public venues?
Well, we've heard of complaints from residents that live at Newman Well, we've heard of complaints from residents that live at Newman Lofts of the loud college activities downtown, impacts quality of life for any of those seniors or 55 and older living at Newman Lofts. So there's various types of complaints that we've gotten, yes.
But those all, now, let me say this. Are all of, this goes where you were going, I think, Mr. Mayor. Each of these already have governing ordinances?
That's correct.
Okay, so it is truly only, and I'm kind of looking at my colleagues, if they agree that it is truly just an enforcement piece?
Well, let me suggest this. Let's see if I can move this thing ahead a little bit. So I would ask, subject to the council's advise and consent, that the city manager do at least two things. That the city manager investigate with his resources what the cost would be of acquiring and implementing some kind of data collection devices with regard to noise on roadways, and report back to us. And secondly, that the city manager ask legal counsel to analyze the existing ordinances to see if the existing ordinances already can be utilized to enforce loud noises in the neighborhoods from whatever they come from, leaf blowers or whatever, and on the roadways, and/or make suggestions to us about how the ordinances can be refined in order to make enforcement of the noise ordinances more effective.
Not yet a third entity.
Please do.
M dot, since we have state roads that go through.
I don't know what you mean by that.
Is it Saginaw State Road?
Yeah, but we, we're in, we're the enforcement mechanism there.
They have claimant and noise violations off of state roads that you can report, and there's, they also do other mitigation fees on noises.
So the city attorney could look at that, yeah.
So if that...
Does that, does that move us ahead, Dr. Altman, to where you want to go?
Yep. I just have one follow-up comment, which is, I think the mayor pro tem's comment about what problem are we trying to solve that's important. The one I would add to the list is the modified mufflers, the cars that, that sound like gunshots. I think, I think that's a problem. And I think it's probably correlated with the drag racing issue, but I, I think it's a somewhat independent issue, and I hear those on a pretty regular basis. And I think those are a concern, too, because of the, the startle quality that they have and, and, you know, all, all the other reasons we're talking about, about this issue. So I would, I would add the modified exhaust to that, to that list.
Well, which is also a sound thing, right?
It's also a sound thing.
I mean, it's in the category of sound, correct? Okay. Mr. Meadows, anything you want to add to the discussion tonight before we proceed?
I'll just note that I live about 100 feet from Abbott Road. So the main noise that we hear is generally sirens, because I'm right across the street from the, the fire department. But, you know, we do kind of count, oh, it's 10 o'clock, because we hear the same loud muffler go by at 10 o'clock, somebody leaving work, apparently. But I, I do support the idea that we're going to follow the, the pathway that the mayor mentioned there. I'll note that, you know, we did, I don't see it in here in these, these ordinances at this point in time, but we, we passed the party noise and the party, party garbage in the front yard ordinances years ago. I'm not sure that they are being totally enforced at this point in time. And a lot of it has to do with the ability of, of having adequate personnel here to actually monitor these things. And I'll note that in the, in 2681, the unlawful noise prohibited, this doesn't really address the issue that we have in the downtown or have had in the downtown, which closes outdoor seating at a certain period of time through our special use permit process. I think we need to take a look at that. But I think, as I recall, since my brother lived in Newman Lofts on the 10th floor and looked down on, on Albert Street, most of the noise that he was bringing to my attention came from one of the bars down there that would close up their outdoor seating, but then open up...
The garage door.
All the garage door windows and have it blast out into the area, which I think was unlawful even at that point...
Yes.
...in time. And I think we've dealt with the issue of the revving motorcycles that generally showed up in the 7-Eleven parking lot. But those would clearly be prohibited by this, this particular unlawful noise ordinance. So when we do review these to make recommendations, I just ask that you, we try to catch all these items that people have reported to us over the years. And that's it. That's all I have to say.
So you want to just make sure that our dragnet is complete?
That's correct.
Okay.
I want the dragnet out there.
Does that give us a framework for moving ahead?
Yep. And, well, as far as I'm concerned, and, and I just also want to encourage us to encourage our lobbyists to continue working at the state level, to see if there are partners elsewhere in the state who might want to get behind possible changes in state legislation that would make it easier to enforce. Because I gather that there are some obstacles under state law to enforcing, to enforcing loud exhaust. It requires sort of unreasonable amounts of proof, is my sort of short caption understanding of, of the issue there. And so I, I can't believe it's just us that, that is facing this. And, and so I, I hope we can continue to be a player at the state level.
Okay. See no further business before the council?
Can I make one last?
Please do.
You know, this is the, the last meeting that our clerk, Marie Wicks, will be serving as clerk. And, you know, I want to personally thank her for all the incredible work that you've done over the years, and the work that you did this year on a very difficult election. Wish you all the best. You know, I love you. So...
Right back at you.
I've loved working with you, is all I can tell you.
Well, I have to, I have, I am going to sort of be around to assist, but this is my last meeting as the clerk. And I'm looking forward to swearing in Amy Gordon as our interim clerk while we search for another. And I have, I know that we're going to have some great applicants for this job. It, I, it's been, it's been a lot of work, but I think we have an outstanding team. Thanks to all of you for your support, and it's truly been an honor to serve. And I intend to remain an active part of the community. And I'm looking forward to learning how to play the baritone ukulele, so I can play with the ukes. I want to be the Jimi Hendrix of, of the ukes. So I thank you very much, and it's, it truly has been an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's not it. I have to say that I'm not exactly sure how, how long Tammy is going to be helping out here, but Tammy is also leaving, the city council aide, assistant clerk. And I, I want to say that I have really enjoyed working with you. You're terrific. And I've had, I've worked with mostly just completely terrific assistants to the, to the city council over the years, and you're, you're really up there at the top of the list. So thank you very much for all the work that you've done for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been a great opportunity, and I'm, I felt like a, it's been a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Is there anything else?
That's it.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Altman, seconded by...
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, people, for coming. Thanks for your service, ladies.